You all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, my clock says seven o'clock, is yours? We're gonna call the meeting to order, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Keep with your voice.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the nation under God.
Stacy, can you hear us okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, it looks great. The room is really nice. It looks awesome. I am unmuted. Can you hear me now or no?
Can't hear you that well, Stacy.
I don't know that I have anything to say, so it's okay. I'm just listening.
We're going to try and turn the speakers up so that we can hear you, Stacy.
Talking about, well, you know, if your tests don't come back.
Can you, can you give us another volume check, Stacy, please?
Sure, thanks. Can you hear me now?
We're still trying to figure it out.
That's what I, believe me, I do this all day long at work. It's, no worries. If I really need to say something, I will, I'll put it in the chat.
Okay.
I'm not very sure if we, what's the, 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 you, it's this year? Oh, your phone rings every day, Phil, for the world.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys too?
Yeah.
She's not coming through the speakers yet.
Crazy. Just can't, can't take it all.
No? People are mad.
Yep.
The first question is, but when can you get here?
Okay, let's start with approval of the agenda. Any changes at all to the agenda? Nothing? We have a motion to approve the agenda?
To approve it?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Okay, I am going to call the public hearing for the future of the Old Town Hall to order, and the first thing I'm going to do is read the letter that we have in front of us. We had Keith ask, Jim Nagel, the CEO, and Tad Redway, the town planner, asked them to look over the town hall and give us any development potential for the former town hall parcel. This is the letter that we got. Pursuant to your request, the code enforcement, and we are going to publish this letter and put it right on the town website. And I think Dan said he had posted it on Facebook.
Yep.
Pursuant to your request, the code enforcement officer and the town planner have conducted an assessment of the development potential of the parcel of the former town hall and attendant land located at 468 Limerick Road. After a thorough investigation of the land use ordinance, subdivision regulations, the main uniform building and energy code, and Americans with Disabilities Act, staff has arrived at the following findings. One, existing conditions. As you are aware, the current town property contains both former town hall and current Arundel Fire Station. The town hall has a gross first floor area of 1,232 square feet plus the 264 square feet of the former vault with an unfinished basement. The second floor also offers a gross area of 1,232 square feet. The existing fire station contains 5,320 square feet of gross living area. Both buildings are served by the same common well and onsite septic system located to the north of the Mountain Road parking area. The long-term efficiency of the common septic system is unknown at this time, but it is likely the system has exceeded its expected service life. There are few other locations available on the site to construct a replacement or second septic system where the property, were the property to be subdivided. Dimensions of the lot make location of a second well on the property difficult. Two, existing uses. The existing uses on the lot are classified as public facilities according to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. Three, zoning dimension standards. According to the tax assessors' records, Lot 3 is exactly one acre in area with 310 linear feet frontage on Limerick Road and 315 linear feet on Mountain Road. The property is located in the R1 district. Minimum lot size in that district is one acre. Since Lot 3 is exactly one acre, the town hall cannot be subdivided and sold as a separate parcel from the fire station. Alternative uses, private businesses. In the past, the selectmen have shown little interest in a landlord capacity leasing and maintaining town structures to private parties. However, in the event that this policy was to be reconsidered, the following non-residential uses are allowed in the R1 district in either permitted or conditional use. An assisted living facility, a church, an educational facility, or a pet daycare center. Get-in breakfasts, boarding houses, daycare home, home occupations type 1 and 2, and other permitted uses in the R2. But such uses are mandated to operate out of a single-family dwelling. As discussed above, subdivision of a separate, single-family lot to facilitate these uses is not possible. Public uses, a recreational facility or a public facility. The more feasible alternative and permitted uses would include public facilities such as a senior center, library, small group meeting space, or fire rescue meeting space, and potential bunkhouse for the student live-in program sponsored by SMCC Fire Sciences Department. Five, physical expansion of the town hall footprint. Conversation of the conversion of the former town hall into another public use is daunting from both a regulatory and a cost-effectiveness perspective. One, horizontal building expansion is limited to 8 to 10 feet to the northwest boundary line and to 10 to 20-foot expansion to the northeast. Any horizontal expansion to the east is limited by the parking lot and the septic system. Two, the most feasible expansion would be towards the Mountain Road parking lot. However, elimination of that parking would have negative impacts on parking capacity at the fire station. Three, vertical use and expansion of the existing town hall will be limited by the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act regulations. While the town hall has successfully dodged ADA compliance over the last 30 years, new construction, expansion, or retrofit of the town hall will not be exempt. Therefore, the selectmen will have to incorporate construction of an access elevator servicing the second floor to the $200,000 to $80,000. And that letter will be posted on the town's website. Okay, I call the public hearing to order, and do you have any comments? Or any questions? And Jake is the president of the Historical Society, if you have something to ask. Go ahead, Jake.
First of all, we want to it has to rain out there right now, but if you're down and cool, you have to use the second floor of the building. There you go, I'm not saying it, because they're easy for the hell of you to hit. If someone wanted to use it.
I think it would probably be a question of the use.
Yeah.
You know, like
Yeah, okay.
If it were, I would say tear it down to one floor. If anybody wanted to use that building, just get rid of the second floor and...
I have a letter here that, not a letter, but I think probably we answered a lot in that letter. A woman sent me some questions that are mostly with, um, doing the specials and mobile and stuff like that. And I guess probably the way you've got letters in there. And the next town newsletter comes out, I'd be able to look at all this information so that I could have a quick discussion with the county.
Okay. Well, our goal is to have something to be able to put on the ballot for voting for in June. Yes or a no? That's right.
And really, Jake, what we, what we're kind of interested in is, I mean, this is, you know, we're going through the budget. So if we need to do something, we need to make sure that we put some money in there to do whatever it is that we're gonna do. So that's kind of why we're trying to figure out what it is and how much money do we need to put aside? How much money need, do we need to, you know, go out for the voters?
Does it use the original pieces at all, or not, 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 not a vote?
It's a separate, it's a separate use. Right, it would have to be subdivided, and you can't subdivide that property. So you can't, the ordinance doesn't allow more than one use on that parcel.
And it's limited in the kinds of uses that you can have, Jake. Very limited in the kind of uses you could put that to.
Yes, yeah, Jack.
It should be.
It should be, it should be on.
Yep. Oh, I got it.
Sure again.
There you go, Jack.
It should be on, Jack.
Okay. I assume you can hear me?
Yep.
Jack reads, Arundel. More, more in the way of observations than anything else, because you've pretty thoroughly covered the ground. As Jason pointed out, I think I heard correctly, the, the building as is, isn't, simply isn't usable for anything. Whether it's expanded or not, my view would be that it would have to be torn down. Probably a new basement put in and, and a new septic system. And that the, it would be advisable, I think, to have a rough estimate of what that would cost for, for any, anybody who's thinking of the potential to have a ballpark number of what that square footage would cost, two-story building, whether it looks like the old building or not, regardless. And that the, in my view, the two best potential uses downstream, and I mean five, 10 years or more as the town grows, are either as a, a senior center or for kids, or a youth center, or potentially for both. And that, that's the best public use of that space. In, in terms of expanding it, I suppose that certainly could be done if you've got to tear out the, the foundation and the basement anyhow. The, I think there was a, a statement too about the, the fire station and the potential need to expand it. And my rough guesstimate is that you could expand that building to the left, looking at it from Limerick. Clear out to the edge of the parking lot, which is what, maybe 10 feet or so? Thereabouts. Enough for another bay. Reslope the roof on that side. New walls coming out, of course. And if there ever is a real need for another bay, it could be done in that space. And, and that would meet that need as well. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you, Jack.
Is it okay if I go ahead and?
Sure.
Ira Camp.
Okay, yep.
16 Ladies Slipper Lane, Arundel. I agree with basically everything Jack just said. I would say in addition to that, the possible use of, I think somebody had mentioned a fire, I mean, police headquarters possibly, if we ever got that far, but I think cost-effective wise, it sounds like we can't really do much with it. So probably the cheapest thing for Arundel would be to find out how much it's gonna be to tear it down and then figure out if anybody's ever gonna use that spot later on in the future and worry about it at that point. That would be my two cents.
Okay, thank you, Ira.
I do, I do have a comment?
Yep, go ahead.
So, hey, Tom, just because that lot can't be subdivided, it really can only be ancillary to the fire station, right? There's no really other use that can be done there because that's a...
I mean, you could, as pointed out in the memo, you could have other public uses there. But that's about it.
Yeah, but those-
That's all the zoning would allow.
Yeah, those public, the public uses that he stated, it's a different use than what's already on that lot. You can't have more than one use on a lot, can you?
Sure. As long as the uses are permitted.
Yeah, yeah, I guess you could, yeah, yeah. Because you could have, you could have a building with three, yeah, right, 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 yeah.
But the biggest problem is the building is not really habitable at this point, right? So it would need to be either completely renovated or torn down and rebuilt?
Yes.
Right, I mean, when we talked about the new town hall, you know, we looked at, and we have, you know, many boards have looked at, you know, what, how can we fix this building to make it? And it just, it needed so much work, it needed so much. And, you know, to Jason's point, if you really can't do anything with the upstairs, so if you're gonna say, okay, don't use the upstairs and do something with the downstairs, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done to that building. It just, in our view, just isn't cost-effective, but somebody might have some other use for it.
Any other comments? Okay, I really wanna give it back to, yeah.
Thank you. The other observation I'd may, would make, that is, if, if this is the direction you want to go in, that I would suggest the building be torn down and, if you will, covered over. I, I think it, it presents a real fire hazard. I mean, it's good for fire training, which happens occasionally out there, but I just, I, I think it's both an eyesore and once you have a, a number for what it would take to replace the building, it'll be clear that there's no potential for, for saving it. And then it's a question, or if you leave it or take it down in the next couple of years. Thank you.
If I may, I'd just like to just highlight some of the things that we discussed when we were successful in getting the building that we're now sitting in done. One of the things that we identified there, obviously, the roof needs to be done. The facade and the outside would need to be repaired or repaired or replaced. The insulation package is, is very limited at this point. The heating condition, the heating system in the building is probably conservatively 40 years or plus old. There's no air conditioning. ADA requirements would require a new entrance, new bathroom facilities. There's only one, or there's two bathrooms downstairs, but they're no, nowhere near ADA compliant. I'm trying to think of anything else that, that we, that we identified, but I think that's about it. I think realistically, if you're looking at doing construction there, I think we're probably $150 to $200 a square foot, depending on what we, as a ballpark, to do something with that building. Maybe Jason can give us a better defining number than that, but I think that's pretty probably room log-
I think you're on the low side in today's market.
Okay.
Materials right now are through the roof, so
All right.
I think you're probably more like $250, $300.
Okay. So, you know, we're talking some substantial money to, to renovate. And I guess that needs to be identified. So Jack, getting to your question, I think we, I think we can come up with some of that number based on some of our own history at this point to at least let folks know that it's, it's a substantial amount of money to, to reconstruct that facility. The other thing I, I might add. So for the public record, we have some comments on, on Zoom that are chat comments. Those are not recorded, so we probably should read them and who they're from so that we at least have a record of those. Yeah, Stacy Gall sent us a, a chat saying burning, train, evolution. Seeing as though the building seems to be in severe state of disrepair. I think she's sort of leading on to what we were already saying.
Just to be clear, that wasn't, that wasn't me. That came from a gentleman named Ryan. I just commented that it was interesting. Okay, I don't have an opinion beyond that, just wanted to be clear.
Okay, Ryan made the comment and...
I just said it was interesting.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
No worries.
Do we have any other comments that you had, that you had received that we could read into the record?
The, the other comments that I had on the building were pretty much what is being expressed here now. I had used for a, if we go to a public police station, used for a bakery, a feed store for farmers. That was mentioned. We had a couple responses to, just to tear the building down, raise it. So to date, that's about all we've had in terms of responses.
Okay, thank you. Are we going to continue at every Selectman's meeting, putting this on there so that people still have the opportunity to contact us and let us know what their feelings are?
I personally would like to see it at least one more time, if not twice. I know we have to do something for the budget, so we are...
Okay, we are going to put this on the agenda first thing, at, at least at our next Selectman's meeting. So that people will still have a chance to comment. And we are going to put a copy of this information from the town planner and the CEO on the town's website. Ira? Did you have something? Oh, okay. Yeah, Jake?
What, this? Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
So, you know, I went on to the Facebook, the Arundel chat, and there's been lots of comments and I've applied to, you know, some of those. But seeing that Jake is here, there's been a lot of comments about this should go over to the Historical Society. And I know Keith has reached out here, I guess, from my part, and probably the board, like, you know, what's the Historical Society's position on this? Do they want the building? Do they don't? Or what's the score with that?
We talked about the board directors and well, our hearts were in saving the building in certain respects, certain members. We just have a lot of faith in these two buildings we have out there. They're here today and others, I think, with the roof that we have. So we came to the conclusion to position that if someone were to take that over and they needed some, maybe consultation or help or some, some assistance in research or something, we would do that for them. But to get actively involved is just way too much. That's where we're, that's where we're at. And I thank Keith for, he notified me a couple once ago about this situation. It was built in 1875, I think, tempered for a while, and then it becomes a disuse and have many iterations since then. It sounds a little, I don't know, the bones of it, it sounds like a mold of it, to begin with. And all the other things, a lot. You gotta have a big shoe ready, you know, to take it, to make it safe, you know?
Thank you, Jake. Any other comments from the board? Any other comments from? No, then I will call the, close the public hearing on the future of the town hall. And now we have public forum, and that is public comment on any non-agenda items. Ira, yeah, grab your microphone.
All right, I'll try not to take too much of your time off here, but I do have a little bit of history to cover for a second. Back in the fall of 2019, I lived on Ladies Slipper Lane. It's a private road. And I realize that a lot of my issues are private matter, so I'll try to keep this focused on how it relates to the town. But in the fall of 2019, we found out that the Zooks had purchased three lots on Ladies Slipper Lane. There was a total of six there. And that they needed to improve the road in order to be able to get building permits for those lots. And basically approached us about helping pay for these road improvements. At that point, we found out that they had already applied to the town and been granted special zoning setbacks for wetlands on one of the lots, which was unbuildable without that setback, as well as the approval from the town to basically create the part of the road that was approved back when this was a subdivision in the back part of it. But what was not clear to me at that time was whether or not they had been obtained permission to actually improve the road that already exists. And so that's where my questions started coming in to the town, in which I emailed Tad and Keith, and Keith did his best to respond and help. But I got zero responses from Tad on a numerous numbers of emails. Finally, Keith forwarded me an email from Tad that was supposedly sent two weeks prior, but everybody that was on the email didn't get it. So I don't know if this was some kind of fabrication to make it look like he had actually emailed us back, but there was five people on the email that Tad supposedly sent. Not one of them received the email, so I don't know how that actually went out. But our questions were at that time was, you know, do the, and after several emails going back and forth and different things coming back to me about what had been approved and what wasn't, my direct question was, do the Zooks have what they need to improve the road right now? And there was no answer ever given. Never got a response, never got an answer to it. Apparently, the answer was no, because now I will, and I have all this email chain and all these letters sent and all this in a packet, if anybody ever wants to see it. Fast forward to February 8th of this year, that was back in March of last year, the emails. So again, started in the fall of 19. These emails with the town were in March of 2020. And now I'm fast forwarding to February of this year, in which we got a letter from the town. This is my biggest problem with the, with the town right now. It was mailed on February 8th, which was a Monday. Okay, this was a letter to us to let us know that there was gonna be a site block and a subsequent town meeting right afterwards the following Tuesday. So that would be the 16th, I believe. So the problem with that is that you mailed it on Monday. Maybe it got to our mailbox Thursday. It's not even our mailing address, which I don't know how after almost 20 years in this town, you guys don't have my mailing address or the P.O. box. But anyway, went, checked our mailbox before we left on... But anyway, went checked our mailbox before we left on vacation. This is now the Thursday or Friday, depending on how you will look at it, before the start of school break. So we were going out of town. I was already gone. My wife checked the mailbox, the notice is in there. Well, you guys are closed on Friday, and you're closed Saturday and Sunday, and Monday was a holiday, and the meeting was Tuesday. So we've sent a letter to the town planner, to the town manager, to anybody that would listen, that we wanted this meeting postponed because we couldn't get there, we were away, and we weren't, in our opinion, notified properly. We're informed that you have a seven-day noticing requirement, which technically you met, but in the real world, how does that help me? Like, I had no opportunity to review these plans, no opportunity to ask any questions. Despite our lawyers, we sent them out to the meeting on our behalf, to the site walk, which again, was held on a Tuesday morning after a Monday holiday, at 9:00 a.m. on our road, in the pouring rain, in the sleet, and then you guys came back here, or the town planning committee, or whatever it was they met with, came back here and had a meeting, in which case, again, our lawyer asked for it to be postponed because we could not attend and hadn't had a chance to view anything, which was quickly denied. And then my neighbor, Mary Beth Lou, said a couple of questions, and then Bob Zook completely, excuse me, Mr. Robert Zook, completely lost his mind, yelling, cursing, intimidating, bullying, these are words that I would use that took place in that meeting. I've got an audio recording of it, if anybody wants to hear it. It's pretty embarrassing, and no control was taken of the meeting, nobody asked him to quiet down, to let people speak. It was a simple question, how does this road now meet my driveway? Is it going to be graded out? Can I get in and out of my house? Lost his mind totally. And, I mean, this is the kind of thing that we're dealing with. We're getting no support from the town whatsoever, and in fact, the opposite. Y'all know me, somebody could have called, somebody could have sent an email, hey, this is coming up, I know you're worried about it, it's been going on for a year and a half. Not even that, like, we didn't even get the mail until after the, until after you guys were closed. I just, I mean, if you're going to hide behind the policy of seven days, I seriously suggest you take a look at your policies and see if they actually work in the real world. I know that on the school board, we have to review all our policies all the time. Can I ask you guys, have you reviewed any of these policies in the last several years? Is there anybody that actually does that?
No.
We haven't reviewed those policies in a while. Staff reviewed policies, I don't believe we've looked-
That's not a policy, Ira. That's in the land use ordinance, those time periods. We don't enact those, the town does. We'd have to be an amendment to the land use ordinance.
Okay, well, who's, what do you mean the town? Who's the town? Aren't you guys-
The voters at the town meeting.
Approved policy?
That's not a policy. That's the time period stated in the land use ordinance.
Okay.
It's not policy we set.
So-
That can be modified, but we take a town meeting warrant to modify it.
It can be modified by the planning board, can make a decision to modify it. Public can come in and put the proper signatures after that, modify, and then we at this election can also stay A or B, but the town's point, it would all go to a town meeting, and it has to be approved by the town board. Not that that's intermodular, I mean, we do that stuff all the time, but that's the process.
Well, so a citizen needs to enact this, trying to get something changed so people can actually get properly notified?
Citizens can. As Dan said, this board could also send a request to the planning board to review the circumstance and then come back to us with recommendations, and then we would decide whether to put it on town meeting warrant as an article for consideration by the town to amend that portion of the land use ordinance.
Well, I would appreciate it if somebody would take a look at that and maybe bring it up for consideration at the next town vote, because-
I appreciate, I mean, I had problems with the U.S. Postal Service as well, I mean, with the- I think others have here, well, mail is just-
Right, but again, if something is important to just drop it in the mail, I mean, if you, everybody knows the way the mail is right now. There was no reasonable expectation that I would have gotten that in time, you know? That's all I'm saying. And I mean, somebody could have given us a heads up, let us know this was coming. I mean, I would have come home from vacation or changed my plans. This is a huge deal for us and a big problem for us. It's just really, it was really disappointing that it went down the way that it did, and with no consideration for our request to delay, none was given whatsoever, and it's just, I don't know, really frustrating to have it go down like that. And honestly, an embarrassment. I really felt bad for Jim, who was trying to put up the meeting, yelling and shouting and constant chaos, and just approved right away anyway. So I don't even know what the point of the meeting was, it didn't feel like there was one.
Ira, real quick, can I, just to clarify, this board was only made aware of this Tuesday night, because we postponed the meeting because of the holiday, right?
What do you mean, of what occurred at that public hearing?
Right. You wrote us a letter, but I want to say, that's the first time that I've ever heard of anything Lady Slipper related, was the night, I think it was that Tuesday night, because we didn't have a meeting on Monday.
We talked about it on Tuesday, because what Ira is describing at that public hearing, because that's what it was, our staff review comes back, holds a public hearing, the maps are laid out, so you, if you were here, but Mary Beth was here, and your attorney was here, so they could view what was being, and ask questions, yeah, that was the, what you described actually happened at that meeting.
That meeting happened earlier in the day.
Correct, but the first time we, this board's got any information on that was that night.
Correct.
Has this come before this board, prior to this, or?
Just the, no, I guess it would have been the planning board, again, before, that approved the road and the lots.
Right.
So I don't think-
I just want to make sure that I personally haven't dropped the ball on anything that's come before us on Lady Slipper Lane, I just-
And again, I don't think it was any of you guys specifically that heard any of this until after this.
Right.
But, I mean, ultimately, somebody's running the town, and somebody needs to hear about it, and somebody needs to, and I'm, again, not trying to point fingers at Keith, but, you know, there was another notice that we were supposed to get of the application being complete, and again, I don't know if this is a policy or whatever you want to call it, but our attorney says that there was supposed to be a notification sent out to us as a butters when the application for this whole process was completed. Never got it. So-
I think-
Again, the lack of response from the town planner, no answers to our emails, no answers, no direct answers to a direct question, months go by, and then all of a sudden, this happens while we're out of town. Just seemed awfully convenient to me for the Zooks.
Yes, Dan?
Ira, the questions that you have or had, have those been answered, or are there still lingering questions?
Well, no, there's nothing to be done now because the road work was approved, and it said that we could appeal the decision, but they've already started. So we had 30 days to appeal, but the work started a few days later. So I don't know what the point of an appeal process would be when they've already dug up our road.
But has the work that is being done, does that have any effect on, you, there was an issue with your driveway, Wes, that you were concerned about?
That was my neighbor's concern. I don't, honestly, I don't really have a lot of concerns necessarily about, well, yeah, that was our concern, was how is it going to meet our driveway, are we going to be able to come and go, are they going to grade it out? I mean, it's going up five feet, but some of those questions were answered at the meeting. I don't specifically have questions right now, other than I just wanted to make you aware of the situation and make you aware of the inadequacies that this process has involved, you know? The lack of response from the town planner, the lack of my opinion of proper notifications, and, you know, if this is how I get treated as somebody who is actively involved in the town, I mean, how are other people getting treated? This just isn't right. It's not good. It's not a good way to do business, and it's not a good feeling to be treated that way.
I think one thing, when we have a meeting with the planning board, I think we need to definitely address the timeframe, because if our plan says, what, seven days or 10 days, we need to expand that number to either 14 days or even 21 days.
Or make it business days.
Yes.
So that way, if holidays are involved and things are closed, you know, you have a different way to count, because seven days could mean one thing on one week and another thing on another, you know? So, but out of all of this, I would ask that the notifications be certainly looked at from a timeline perspective, and also from the town planner, are notifications actually being sent out when they're supposed to, because I'm saying they're not, not just timeliness, but at all.
Hey, it's Stacy Gail, and-
Return receipt requested to make sure people are getting the notifications.
So, I'm done, but thank you for your time. And this is a great, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, this is a great space. Congratulations, everybody, it's my first time in here, so glad you guys got a good meeting.
I think Stacy's saying something, too.
Yeah, I'm on the Zoom, I'm not sure you guys can hear me, but I just, I wanted to, I don't know, Ira, we've not met, I don't believe, I know Mary Beth, she's a runner friend of mine, just wanted to offer up that we, as citizens, have certainly experienced some of those exact same concerns. The notification is not as good as it could be. I mean, I feel like there's a lot of other channels that could be used by Tad, even just social media, email, there's other ways, and we do often not get what we need, and we don't get it when we need it, and we've felt that as well. So I just wanted to, the gentleman that just spoke, I just wanted to offer my thoughts, and I appreciate his concerns and understand them and second them.
Thank you. And, yeah, and thank you, Ira. We are going to be meeting with the planning board. We have a workshop with them scheduled for-
Tonight.
Tonight.
Is it tonight? No, it's next week.
We have a public, we have a workshop session with the planning board, Monday, next Monday, 7:00. You can come here, or you'll be concerned as I pass through.
And we've made notes, and again, taken them into consideration, and Jack?
Yes, I didn't hear whether or not the planning board meetings are recorded, audio at least, they are. So this discussion is publicly available?
Yes.
I think it would be advisable for all of us to go listen to it.
Well, we'll be here next Monday night, the planning board will probably be on Zoom.
I understand that, but I think to get the full context of this, and I simply can't imagine citizens being treated like this. It just boggles my mind, with virtually no flexibility whatsoever, and I'm really disappointed in what I'm hearing, and I don't think it's the first time I've been hearing about this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Ira. We will certainly, you have to go ahead, go right ahead.
Did you guys get briefed on the tenor and tone of that meeting that was held here? The, or were any of you actually here for it? The follow-up meeting after the site walk, what was it called? The-
It was a public hearing.
Public hearing?
Yeah.
No, I did not brief the Board of Selectmen on the events that happened. I wasn't in the room, but I was, I was talked, spoken with Jim Nagel as to what transpired during that day.
Did I overstate?
You did not.
Thank you.
Was it recorded? Was it-
I have an audio recording of it.
It was probably not, it was probably just a staff meeting. Right, a staff review.
We notified everybody that our attorney was recording the meeting prior to the meeting, and we do have an audio recording of it. It's not great, but you can get the picture.
So was the language, or, you know, the stuff that wasn't appropriate, was that from a town employee, or was that from somebody else that was-
No, from Robert Zook.
Excuse me?
Robert Zook.
Jake, you had something?
I just, I want to say, this man has asked for, rightfully so, he's asked for two things. One was to get a longer notification time with these things, but the other thing is, basically saying, be very blunt to the town planner, do your job, and, I mean, maybe somebody has to talk to him and say, it sounds like you did not communicate with this guy. And you should be saying, hey, Dad, let's step up the plate, get this information out. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jake. Okay. Anything else under public hearing? All righty, let's go on to approve the minutes of March 8.
No one has any changes that have moved to approve it as written?
Okay, motions been made to approve them as written.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? You got that, Keith?
Yes, I do.
All righty, how about committee and board reports?
I got nothing.
I did give Keith a copy of the RSU budget with changes that have been added and subtracted, well, actually added to the budget. We don't have a, of course, a bottom line, knowing how much will be our responsibility, but it does show in there how much, what the increase for the year is.
What's the percentage?
I don't have them with me, I put it in my office.
Oh, okay.
One of the 5% that they had originally talked about.
No, no, hold on just a second. Ira, do you know what the bottom line percentage increase in the RSU budget is? Was it two, two-something, three-something?
So it was before you factor in, I want to do this online.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, I put you on the spot.
That's okay. I might get you a little bit.
But before you factor in any revenues, the overall increase in the budget from last year to this year was like 2.94%, something like that, 2.9 something. But once you factor in the revenues and the fact that we're using carryforward from previous years, so those are the undesignated fund balance, and we're using carryforward to go into this budget, it ends up being less than 1%, like a, do you want me to see if I can find the email? I didn't bring them with me, I'm sorry, but-
Keith has it, it's in his office.
She gave me the booklet, it's tonight, so I'll take a look.
But there was, yeah, once we apply those, and again, this isn't approved yet, but that's where it's at right now, it's like 0.35% increase, once you factor in the carryforward or something, it's minimal, it's almost same as last year.
Wonderful, thank you, Ira. Okay, how about managers' reports?
Yes, several thing, I just want to, just discuss very quickly the municipal budget review. Obviously, at our last meeting with the budget board and the Board of Selectmen, there was still some issues related to John and I coming up with an appropriate tax, proposed tax impact moving forward. John came in my office late last week, and we were able to look at the numbers that he was attempting to use and what I was factoring, and what we were doing, I think in John's calculation, we were doing a lot of speculating as to what was going to happen with various values, as well as what the TIF financing plan amount was going to be, and these had numerous changes in what we were both calculating. In addition to that, the form from the state has, what happens is that there is a removal of the homestead exemptions, veterans- there is a removal of the homestead exemptions, veterans, state revenue sharing. That gets calculated in by the form at the end. So when he removes that, he's actually taking from what we anticipate for revenue from the form of close to $200,000. When you take that $200,000 off his calculation, it increases his rate significantly. We both agreed that that was generally what was happening. But we did agree quite vehemently, our calculations came correct with the municipal amount that we believe would be impacted on the tax rate. So I think we'll share a little bit more of that information with you at your, at your next meeting with the budget board. But I think we've got a pretty good handle as to what the differences were. And I think when we get ready to set the rate, I don't think it's going to be anywhere near 1765 as he had initially calculated on the raw data. I think it's going to be closer to the number that I was projecting based on the raw data that we had. So we'll see what happens with that, but I just wanted to report out to that. I also provided to you the Arrow newsletter in your packet that will be going out. I just wanted you, if there are any, anything that you wanted to add. Simone and I spoke today after tonight. If, if it looks okay, we're going to go ahead and go to, to press.
Can we add this to the newsletter? Is that too much to add to the newsletter?
Oh, I'll, I'll talk to her tomorrow about it and see if we can add it. Sure?
Yeah, that way everybody will know.
And we'll see what we can do with that. So as soon as, as soon as we finalize it, our thought is here that we'll go ahead and, and get it ready and put it out into the mail immediately. We had some developments recently on the electricity here at Arundel Municipal Building. And as you know, that we have been struggling with this demand charge from the, from CMP that, that they've been charging us, even though to date, we have yet to use any electricity off the grid. Everything that we have generated here on site has been used by the town and we have a bank of kilowatt hours in the bank on, with CMP that we can use at any time. So I had a, I had a chance to chat with Nioto late last week about this subject. He was pleasantly surprised, particularly during the winter months, that we were generating so much electricity. Even on some of the bad weeks, we still were able to create electricity that, that went into the bank. So, but getting back to the category that they have us in, Nioto reached out to Jim Plamondon and Jim felt that the character, the, the position or the characterization that they had us in that the, was inaccurate. So instead of being in a medium business situation, we should have been in general services. So we made a contact to CMP late last week and made the change to a general services. So we're hopeful that demand charge is going to go away. So the demand charge that we're getting hopefully will be eliminated as we move forward. So that was good news. We'll just have to keep an eye on it. Nioto has been extremely helpful in working our way through that process and bringing Jim on with his expertise helped a lot as well. So hopefully it's good, good news for us.
Have we decided where, what we're going to do or have we done anything with our reserve in helping to pay, say, the fire station or the town garage?
Well, I think it's a, it may be a little premature, even though we believe it's going to be extremely beneficial to us. Nioto felt that we should have at least a years of data before we start making those, those changes. Because it's not, we have to, we have to characterize a percentage that would go, not the amount that we have. There's strict guidelines as to how that works. So we would, if we had, say we had 30% extra, we could take 10% and move it to, or 15% to the, to the fire station and 15% to the public works department. But the other caveat is that they try to get us, we have to clearly identify that every bill is named the same way. If it's not named the same way, CMP will deny the net metering to be distributed to another. So we've got to work on making sure that all of our bills from CMP say, that say Town of Arundel. Right now, they say Town of Arundel Fire Station, Town of Arundel Bergeron Drive, Public Works. So we've got to clean that up as well. So still a work in progress.
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this, it hurts my head. Is this a learning experience for Nioto also? Because the last comment that we personally had on Nioto was, yeah, we've got surplus, we can go ahead and apply it to our bill now. And now all of a sudden that's changed.
Well, I don't think it's necessary it's changed. I think we're taking a cautious look at it as opposed to saying aggressively that it's going to be. He's pretty confident that it's going to be there. And that when the summer months, the spring and summer comes, that we're going to be generating so much electricity that our surplus is going to be pretty substantial. Right now, we use probably about 4,300 kilowatt hours a month. And this is during the heating season. It's probably going to be more during air conditioning because it'll run more. But right now, we have a bank of over 4,000 kilowatt hours in our bank. Because it was December and January, we were, we were grabbing from our bank because we weren't creating enough, but now we're creating enough again, so.
Is there ever a chance of some of that bank going away or will that always be there?
No, the way the system is set up, if the bank isn't used, you lose it.
So at when do we lose it?
We lose it after a full year. So, so this year, we may lose some that we generate because we're trying to get a grasp on how this whole process is going to work. But once we get the system set up, I think that we won't be losing it. We'll be earmarking it to our other municipal, municipal buildings.
I tend to think that by late summer, we could have some real good idea of what it is. I mean, it may not be a lot, but I personally, I don't know, it seems to be nothing. So wherever we go in the bank, I want to use it.
Sure. Yep, understand.
How are we going to tell if we get, so will CMP then only send us one bill or will they send us three, still send us three separate bills?
They will send us three separate bills, as I understand. And then we have to earmark specifically what percentage of our surplus we want to go to offset those bills.
And we would have to determine which bill is for which place? Because it wouldn't say Bergeron Drive or it wouldn't say Fire Station?
Right, it will, they all have to say Town of Arundel on them, number one. And then after that, we can say Bergeron Drive, Limerick Road, Fire Station.
But how will we know when we get the bill which is?
Because they're, they're billed separately. There's a meter on each one of those.
So we have the meter number?
Yes, each one has a meter.
Okay. Yes, Jack?
Yes, I'm wondering if there's a prospect of, on the back, you have to react if this change is approved or because of the classification, there's, there's the wires, the kilowatt hours. They give everyone that is a government, government for the lighting, side of the schedule or base costs for lighting, 40% of service to the state of any, or CMP smart state of any. And it brings back that, there's a fair amount of change.
Well, yeah, you're talking about the demand charge that we're being charged right now. We have a, we, once we, we're hopeful that once we have this general service account set up that we're going to be charged 30 bucks a month as part of that. What happens also is we have this demand charge that we get charged upon us. And I think what Jack's referring to is that we have paid that because we've been obligated to. But maybe we should go back and see if we can get it back. So good, interesting point, something I haven't thought about yet, but. I do, and there's a copy in my office for you. And then, and then finally, under managers' report, I just wanted to make sure that we're, that you all remember we have a meeting and obviously we spoke about tonight, a workshop session with the planning board here a week from tonight at, starting at 7 o'clock. I'm not quite sure how many of the planning board members will, will show up, but we'll certainly have Zoom and I guess we'll have to look at why we didn't get audio tonight out, out in there. So it's something else that we'll have to deal with, but.
Stacy and I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure either because you generally had it, so. So anyway, that's it for me.
Okay. And business? No business. And approval of payroll and the payables warrant?
A move.
Motion's made and seconded to approve both payroll and payable warrants. All in favor? All righty, any other business?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, go ahead.
Dan and I are going to echo each other. I know what he's going to say.
Now.
So we heard a comment tonight that we've heard numerous, numerous times, lack of response from the town manager. And I'm personally, I'm getting tired of hearing it. I thought that once we made the move that we were going to move and give the planners some help, that would go away in my mind and pass the case plain and simple. It's unacceptable to me to have somebody come in and say that.
I will, I'll follow up with that. I, I would like to see this board involve more in staff review or, or something. I just feel like it's falling on deaf ears when TAD gets spoken to. And I don't want to point him out directly, but of late, it's all the complaints that we've been hearing is about him. So I don't know if we can come up with some sort of scenario or, or policy where maybe the first time, maybe it channels through the town manager directly. And if it doesn't improve, then I think it needs to come in front of this board. Because I, I just think the one-on-one interactions with staff is just not, it's just not working. I don't, I don't know how the rest of this board feels or if there's actually any control that we can have over staff because it's. Charter provision says we don't. I, I think that should get changed because.
Well, what we can change when we're talking with the planning board is we can change the policy to modify the code for the timeframe to make sure that notices, even if notices have to be sent out, registered mail, return receipt requested and put in there that those receipts have to be back in the office seven days before the meeting. Because that way you know everyone's been notified because they, you have the return receipt and that they can't have a meeting until those receipts are back.
That can be a problem on the other end.
Yeah.
But the person who's looking for the permit and all of a sudden something doesn't come back because somebody doesn't pick it up, I send out registered mail all the time and 50% of them come back as uncollected or people won't sign for it.
We have to be a way we can change that timeframe, even as.
We can examine that, but I, we've got to be careful of, there's two sides to this. People who may object to what's going on and people who want to move forward with their project, whatever.
And if it's going to be seven days, we may have to change it to 14 business days. Make it business days.
I mean, I think it's extending circumstances of what happened with Ira. And I get it, but that has an opportunity of happening again.
But it's been going on for over a year?
For two years. Well, the lack of response from a planner, to me, that's a separate issue when that's been going on, but this, this meeting thing just kind of happened over the.
The comments that we heard from Ira tonight have been going on for a long, long time with practically every applicant that goes before the board. And I'll stick to my old story that I personally think he may be a good person, but he's not the right fit for this town. I think it's time for a change. I've said that before.
Just caution the board about taking up personnel matters without the, that the subject of those matters being notified and being here and having an opportunity to be heard. You've got to be very careful, folks, personnel matters.
I wouldn't mind next meeting then having an executive session and inviting them in here because I think this board needs to hear.
We don't have.
We don't, no, we can't.
Why can't we at least express all the complaints that we've had against them? Why can't we do that?
We are, to Keith.
Yeah, but it's getting, it doesn't, that doesn't work. I'm sorry, that's not working. I don't.
Well, that, that's the issue you can have. If you don't think it's working, you can speak with me in the executive session.
I, I wouldn't mind having that.
I'm not going to comment about it tonight, but I can't. But there are other things that I can bring up.
Dan, should we schedule an executive session at our next meeting?
If you'd like, sure can.
Okay. Will that work?
Yes, definitely.
And I would, I would like to be clear on what the ground rules are. What we can discuss at that executive session. And maybe Tom, I know all of that, but I don't want to overstep our bounds. But something is to be done. And that charter could get changed, Tom, if I went to vote?
You have to have the charter review commission put in place. Yeah, we have the charter.
And I think any changes, does that have to be a two-thirds vote?
Yeah.
A two-thirds vote of the number of people who voted in the last presidential election?
Governatorial, I think.
Yeah.
Whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty, it's pretty expensive to change a chart. And maybe other ways that you can approach the subject matter and get what you want. Is that department under contract or is it just a hired person?
I think it's hired through the town manager.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's not under contract?
Okay, any other discussion, any other business?
Move to adjourn.
Motion's made to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, we are adjourned.